February 24th, 2020 meeting. We are happy to have you here tonight. We're going to start with a call to order. Well, this is the call to order. And we're going to have a prayer led by our associate pastor Phil Blodgett, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll take attendance. So if you would stand with us. Pastor, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Phil. Okay. It's time to call the roll.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Present.
Councilmember Stricula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Here.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Here.
Mayor Grossman?
Here. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 10th council meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Obeying. Oh, thank you, yes. All right. City managers report. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Have a couple of items. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is Monday, March 9th. Typically, the meeting following that would be on March 23rd. However, that is also spring break for Mason City Schools. In the past, that has created conflict, sometimes for council members, as well as for the public, especially when public hearings are scheduled, which we have one on the agenda to schedule. I do think that a single business meeting in the month of March is very manageable, given the current anticipated legislation. That would then free up the possibility of a council work session that could be scheduled for March 30th at 5:00 PM. If council would like to adjust your meeting's schedule, a motion would be in order to that end.
Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Also want to make, this just a reminder for council, but also for the public, tomorrow, the city once again hopes, hosts, right out here in the atrium, the BioOhio Job Fair. That is, I believe, our fifth year, perhaps, of hosting that. This is great opportunity where we work regionally with the state and BioOhio to bring both companies and potential employees here to Mason. We have a strong core of biohealth and medtech employers. We believe that this both helps with the talent workforce issues that all of us are trying to address on behalf of Mason businesses, as well as it fuels Mason's economic development strategy. Believe that in the last six years, I guess this is the sixth year of the event, about 2,000 candidates have visited Mason as part of that effort. So that'll be here tomorrow in the atrium. Also, on Sunday, March 15th, the Community Center will be hosting a World Down Syndrome Day event. Children with Down Syndrome will be able to enjoy activities in the fieldhouse, gymnastics, swimming and rock climbing between 2:00 and 5:00 PM. And their chaperones and parents are admitted for free for that event. Also, for council's attention, the annual Police Awards Banquet will be on Thursday, March 19th at 6:00 PM. That is intended to honor members of the Police Department and assistants who have made a difference within the community. If council members are interested in attending, please let me or Kendra know. And on March, let's see, on Saturday, March 21st, the Community Center is again hosting the Race to Any Place, as in partnership with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, where teams of four to 12 riders compete on stationary bikes to see who can ride the farthest and, in the process, raise money for support and patient services for those affected by leukemia and lymphoma. Participants receive a free Community Center day pass and family members are able to attend at reduced price. Finally, I have two items on our schedule here. First, I'd like to introduce Kate Solomon is here with a special announcement. She is the Executive Director of the FC Cincinnati Foundation. And would like to hear from her later on in the agenda. We'll have an opportunity, or we may want to move that up, to take action based on Ms. Solomon's announcement. Do you want to move to the microphone?
Hello, everyone. I'm really excited to be here this evening about a potential partnership with the city and Makino Park. One of our key foundation programs is building what we call mini pitches throughout the greater Cincinnati area. Typically, these are found in more urban settings, letting kids have the opportunity to play the game in a safe setting. But when we learned about Common Ground, Makino Park saw a really unique opportunity to help bring the game of soccer in an improved manner to the community. And so, very excited to be here today, looking at a mini pitch build at Makino Park, where it will be a full structure that we can show you in a little bit more detail here shortly, allowing different groups like Top Soccer and Individuals to pick up a game of soccer at their leisure. And so with that, I open it up to any questions that you all may have about this potential partnership.
You say you have some renderings for us to look at?
What was that?
Renderings?
Yes.
Oh, sweet, that's what I'm. It's pretty exciting. Thank you for thinking of us and, you know, stretching your boundaries a little bit and coming north, because I think, obviously, in the spirit of what we have out there, it certainly fits. So, thank you.
Absolutely, we're excited about it.
Ms. Solomon, for those watching at home or here tonight, can you explain a little bit more about Top Soccer?
Sure.
Thank you.
So Top Soccer is one of several organizations that brings different sports and athletic opportunities to those with different disabilities. So whether it's Top Soccer, whether it's Special Olympics, whatever it may be, the idea of bringing a soccer field to everyone is something that's very appealing to us. And we know that there is interest on Top Soccer's side to be that partner.
We do, maybe it'll be helpful at this point, we have a video that kind of introduces, gives some visuals to the announcement. Go ahead and play that.
Great.
Mayor, what this means is, faster than we had anticipated, Makino Park, which was accelerated in the last 12 months with contributions from Makino. We also have Rachel Koffler, I think is back, oh, she's right there, and Kevin Collins, who have both been instrumental in the development of Makino Park, as well as the relationship with FC Cincinnati, here joining us. This is a huge gift from FC Cincinnati. I believe we're the third one that they've built, and a unique one in the access for disabilities. To be able to host that at Makino Park is just an abundance of blessings faster than we had anticipated. And I think there are a lot of people that led to the development of Makino Park, which has attracted this level of attention. This is an extremely generous gift, when you consider the profile FC Cincinnati has in the community. We are beyond grateful to be the recipients of this. Had promised Ms. Solomon that we wouldn't make too much fanfare here, but that we would save that for when the park opens with the mini pitch, hopefully later this spring. But I do think it's worth, for Ms. Solomon's benefit, at least a little round of applause.
Thank you. We're very excited about it.
If I can just say one thing real quick. Thank you so much for doing this. This is wonderful. And again, I'm just amazed, Rachel, it was an idea from, you know, one individual, and this idea really has sprout and has become an amazing event for our city. You know, Mason kind of prides themselves on this private-public partnerships. And we really can't do it without everyone's support and involvement. And so we really appreciate you doing this for our city.
Absolutely, thank you, really, truly. We are so excited about this. Since we heard about the project, you know, mid-year, really, last year, it really went to the top of our list. So we're really just thrilled to see that it seems to be coming together very nicely.
Mayor, if I could comment, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to have you come and bring this to Makino Park. Time-wise, do you have any ideas? Is this going to be in conjunction with the opening of Makino Park? Will it be ready to roll out when the park opens?
Assuming weather cooperates, we will be on track to be able to open with the park.
That'd be excellent. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I failed to mention one other person in the audience. Chief Farrell has been, continues to put in the legwork on these contacts to move the park forward. So he's seen their next to Rachel, which probably why I couldn't see Rachel, because he overshadowed her.
Yes. It would be fitting for council to offer a motion to move item 13, which is ordinance 2020-26, up on the agenda. Is there a motion to read that by title only?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I think I skipped a step. I needed, did I skip a step? I did, I knew it, I knew it. Okay, I need the motion to move it up, please, to the present time on our agenda. Could someone make that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Chance, second?
I'll second.
Again, all in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, now, ordinance 2020-26, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the FC Cincinnati Foundation related to Makino Park and declaring an emergency.
Eric?
I have very little to add, except to reference what this ordinance does. It allows the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the FC Cincinnati Foundation to allow them to move forward with construction and contribution of the mini pitch to the city of Mason. The foundation will cover the entire cost of the construction of the mini pitch and anticipate to begin that work next month and hope to have that done in time for May, when we anticipate the final opening ceremony for Common Ground at a date that we're still working to determine. So with adoption of this ordinance, we'll be able to accept this generous gift.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the rule.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. Ms. Solomon, would you mind terribly to have a moment with us for a photograph?
Of course.
Oh, thank you. Let's give her one more round of applause while we're at it.
Mayor, should we also bring up?
Oh, yes.
Chief and?
Yes. We need our other Common Ground aficionados to please come up and join us. Thank you for that. Eric, do you have anything else in your report?
I do. I have another guest to introduce, or a couple of guests. Prior to the council meeting here, we had a work session that began at 5:00 PM. Were able to spend about two hours discussing with council and our guests here, as well as members of the public, some of the city's ambitions for the golf course and anticipate capital improvement to that. So we spent about two hours in that discussion. We have Chief Moore and Hurzan here, and thought we'd repeat that two-hour discussion now.
Sounds great.
Maybe a five-minute overview for the benefit of those in the audience and those that may be watching on TV. Like to ask Chief Moore to introduce our guests.
Thank you. Mayor, council, city manager, the staff has, over the last several years, looked at improvements to the golf course and realized that moving ahead with anything that big without some expertise would not be wise. So introduce Hurzan Golf Design. Dr. Mike Hurzan and his partner, Dr. Chris Hurzan, are located in Columbus. The firm is responsible for over 400 projects spanning five continents and six decades of business. Michael Hurzan is the author of seven books on golf course design, construction and renovation, as well as the guide to building a practical golf facility. He is the recipient of the highest award of the American Society of Golf Course Architects, the Golf Course Builders Association of America and the Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America, an honor he shares with only six other people. The author of numerous magazine articles and forwards to several more books, Mike has received Architect of the Year awards from multiple industry publications and numerous other honors from publications and industry associations. Notable recent design commissions include Aaron Hills, the host of the 2017 U.S. Open and the 2011 U.S. Amateur Championship, co-renovation with Jack Nicklaus on the Sayota Country Club in advance of the 2016 U.S. Senior Open, renovation of the Ottawa Hunt and Golf Club in advance of the 2017 LPGA Canadian Open, Philadelphia Cricket Club course, co-host of the 2015 PGA of American National Championships. So with that, let me introduce Dr. Mike Hurzan.
Thank you very much.
I think you're good.
Oh, there we go, we got it. Thanks. Mayor, council, thank you very much for this opportunity. And congratulations on having the wisdom to purchase the golf center back some years ago and preserve that open space and keep it from becoming housing or becoming something else. So again, my compliments to all of you for having that wisdom. As John points out, our business is golf, and the game of golf has been changing. And since about 2000, there's been several challenges that have caused the participation in golf to go down and golf courses to have, to be a much tougher business. Those challenges have been a lot of competitiveness from other kinds of recreational experiences that people could have, whether it's biking or canoeing or skateboarding or traveling. And the other challenge that golf courses have had, which all forms of recreation have, are rising labor costs, rising costs for materials and equipment and all of those. And so being in the golf business has those challenges. But they can be overcome, especially when you have a wonderful site like the city of Mason does at the golf center, where you're so well-located, high visibility, good bones to the golf course. And we just need to reimagine that golf course. We can't do business like we did back in the 60s, 70s and 80s. We really need to think about that 21st century. And we need to think about who that consumer is going to be. And that is really someone who is family-oriented, someone who wants to bring the kids and be able to spend some time. So they're value-sensitive. They don't want to pay an exorbitant amount of money. They want to feel like when they spend the time with you and spend that money, that they got some value from it. And we believe that that's very possible at the golf center. Certainly, there's a certain indifference to prestige. We, I always smile when I think about that. I see how people go to church today compared to when I was growing up, how people dress to go to church. And it's just a matter of perception, I suppose. Certain environmentally sympathetic, which the city of Mason has proven over and over. And we need to look at all of the entertainment options that might be available. And it's more pleasure-oriented than competition-oriented. And the most important thing in those four bullet points that are on the screen are time-sensitive, time-limiting. People want to be able to come to the golf course, spend a minimum amount of time to get that golf fix, whatever that is, and then be able to do other things. And so logically, we must reimagine the golf course so that it is smart. And that is what we mean by that. Sustainable, both environmentally and economically. And ideally, we would like to make it profitable. And that means that we have to offer as wide of variety of income opportunities as possible on the golf course and accommodate the needs that people wanted. As Chris and I were looking at the golf course, we saw that even though the golf course has good bones, it needed to be some master planning done to bring it in concept with what that 21st century golfer wants. And that is, we want to, not to make the golf course easy, but we want to certainly minimize those things that are annoyance to golfers and to accelerate the pace of play, being sensitive to time. Certainly consistent playing conditions, best playing conditions possible, but yet being environmentally sensitive, using the least amount of water, fertilizer, pesticide and produce a good round of golf. And then certainly, in order to do that, it means having good infrastructure. In particular, we're talking about irrigation system. We're talking about the drainage. We're talking about the grasses that are used, things that will allow the golf course to be maintained at a higher level with fewer inputs. And then certainly, a great diversity in yardage. So whether you're a little person or whether you're an old person, you can come to the golf course and find a yardage of a golf course that is going to be very, very, very comfortable for you. And so those are the things that we want to be able to do. And one of the most glaring omissions that we see in the golf course has been the lack of a practice facility and an all-weather practice facility. People, in order to get this golf fix, want to come and, if they have an hour, hour and a half, be able to hit some golf balls, chip and putt, maybe use the putting course, which is like a little nine or 18-hole course where you can putt, and then be able to go do other things. And whether you're a visitor to King's Island and you have that little bit of time in the evening and you want to come over, it's another opportunity to get quote-unquote "that golf fix." I think that you have that potential to be an outstanding golf course. Our ultimate goal, then, is to provide a forum where visitors and residents and members can come and find what they're looking for and be very happy to give you their discretionary time and money. And that means being very intelligent about the facilities that we build. In order to look at your golf course, which was designed back in the 50s and the 60s, is that we had certain limitations. And as the slide up on the screen says, we have two imperfect solutions. We wish we had a perfect solution in looking at your golf course, but we don't. Those two imperfect solutions are because we had five major limitations. First of those limitations is that you have 22 golf holes. We only need 18. And so we're maintaining 22 golf holes or 20% more property than you need to in order to be financially competitive. And so we needed to look at, how can we repurpose that ground and make maximum use and yield from it? The second limitation was, is that, you know, the golf course is in fixed corridors. On most golf holes, there's houses on either side, and that isn't going to change. And we need to live within that. And as I suggested early on, we do have very good bones in this golf course, and we don't want to materially change that, except to the idea of trying to select those best holes, best uniform, 18-hole experience among those 22, and then to modify them in a minimal way. Typically, the sorts of things that we're talking about, as an example, sand traps or sand bunkers. They're the single most expensive part of the golf course to maintain. And no one says, you know, I play a great golf course because it has great sand bunkers. No one likes to be in those. They're more of a nuisance. And so if we can shrink that footprint of those sand bunkers, we're going to save money, we're going to speed up play, and we're going to make the game more enjoyable. And it can be done without having extensive sand, as an example. The other limitation that we had was the power lines. Everybody's familiar with those. And then lastly, the roadways are not going to change. And we have to be cognizant about golf car traffic on those. So what were our solutions? Basically, we had two options. We had an option A and an option B. Option A, as you can see here, the main difference really becomes to the focuses on that driving range, practice area, evening entertainment center, however we'd want to call that. In this particular case, in option A, it's down here in the south part of the property. If we look at option B, you'll see that it has been moved more northward. And so in both instances, that learning center, practice range, entertainment area is going to take up two golf holes. In addition to that, we're suggesting that the two golf holes over by the schoolyard, five and six, that those be decommissioned as part of the golf course. Not necessarily gotten rid of, but certainly repurposed in a different way. And whether that's for a pure educational or whether it's a short game center for juniors or for first tee or however it may be. And so those are the two major options that we had available. Our recommendation in looking at the master plan was for option B. Let me back up and, whoops. Well, and now we are stuck there, and John will try to help me out. But our recommendation was, is that the learning center should go at the more northern location. And that is because it's more serviceable from the clubhouse. It allows you to attract outings. It allows you to use, to sell a separate range membership for someone who wants just to come and hit some balls and chip and putt and to do other things with. So those are the two options. Our recommendation is for this one. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Any questions for Mr. Hurson? Okay. We are so glad that you came. And we did have a lengthy work session with Mr. Hurson Senior, Mike, and Chris Junior. Well, he's not Junior, Mike Junior, he's Chris. But I digress. To be clear, this is all conceptual. We are just beginning a process of vision crafting for the golf course. We set aside, as you may recall, in our budget, $2 million for some infrastructure improvements, which we know are on the critical path to doing anything with our golf course. We need to revitalize some of our infrastructure. So, not being the golf expert, I'm winging it here, but... So, not being the golf expert, I'm winging it here, but I just want to reassure the public that we haven't made any decisions on what concept plan we would follow and if we would even follow it exactly like that, but we got a lot of great feedback from our guests that came, our residents that came to our work session. And we're going to continue this ongoing process of getting input from the community and researching with outside groups and experts, just like the Hertzons, who did a really great job teaching us today. Is there anything anyone from council would like to add, or Eric, our city manager?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I was just going to add that, you know, we saw Chief Moore give the resume of this group, and it is a very prestigious consulting group with, I will say, a lifetime of experience in this field and awards. So, we're very excited to have your thoughts on this. And they come, you know, you come highly recommended, and we're excited with the work that you put forth. We understand that there's no perfect solution to the $700,000 a year approximately every year we've had for the last 12 years. It was, I think, even 9 million or 900,000, you know, the first few years we bought this. It was worse, it's getting better, but that's been my big concern, is the amount of losses that we're eating every year. This is what the mayor just said, this is the first step, which is just conceptual. And my thoughts here were, our goal is to take the necessary steps now to restore the golf course to what it originally was, which is going to be a process because it takes a lot of money. But we're trying to cut those losses each year, and so there is no magic wand. I know that, to the point we're at right now, this has been about an 18-month process. I think before you guys got started, you've been messing with this for 18 months. I think I just learned of this drawing today, I think we saw it for the first time maybe six months ago in a finance committee meeting, something very similar to this. So, I mean, they've been doing a lot of work coming close to this. And so, we're excited to be able to have the work session, get feedback from all the residents, and we're excited to at least be addressing the elephant in the room regarding the golf course. And so, we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the opportunity. The potential is extraordinarily high, and so it's very exciting for us professionally to be able to make that transition from something that's been a drain to something that will yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel, I was just going to ask you real quick. I know we glossed over those six other people that you have been recognized with, and so if you wouldn't mind mentioning those?
I've been very honored to be in the company of the six individuals that Ashley is referring to, is Byron Nelson, Jack Kidwell, or Jack Nicklaus, Larnell Palmer, Robert Trent Jones Senior, Reese Jones, and Pete Dye. And those are the other people that have been similarly honored to me. So, I'm very humbled to be in their presence as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone knows anything about golf, those are, I'd say probably the best names in golf and especially around course design. So, that's awesome. Like I said, we've kind of glossed over that chief on a few different occasions. Let me wait a minute, let's announce who those people are. So, I'm sorry to call you on the spot there, but I think that's pretty important.
Thank you.
Mayor, I was just going to mention, what council authorized work with Hertzan was to take this master plan concept and begin designing it. And that design will encompass more than the city can likely afford in any given year. And that's always a tricky process when you're in a master plan process, kind of the give and take, as your concept evolves into a master plan that evolves into a design that can actually go out to bed, and then what chunks of that and kind of the timing and sequencing of it that the city would move forward towards actual construction. So, there's a bit of a fluid process there as we keep moving on the work that the council authorized with Hertzan. And now I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Oh, well, what will be important here, kind of on the other side of that, is the timing of their work, the timing of contracts, and then sequencing that with the golf course operations so that you minimize the impact on, you know, you get the results you want or you start getting them as soon as possible, but you also minimize the impact on the annual golf season. So, that's a lot of the work that we hired them to figure out, and that's the process that they'll have to start now, and more detail than I can figure out myself.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hertzon. We really appreciate you coming, and thank you, Chief Moore and Chris Hertzon, for the wonderful presentations you made today in our work session. Do you have anything else?
No, I think that concludes the manager's report with my apologies.
Doozy. Okay. All right, we need to rearrange a little bit. We have a presentation planned today from Warren County Sheriff Larry Sims, and we also have one planned by Commander Aerosmith from the Warren County Drug Task Force. If council is amenable, could we change seven and eight so that Sheriff Sims may go first?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
He's a sheriff, we're going to do whatever he says. Okay, I think we're all good. Come on up. Thank you very much, Sheriff Sims.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very, very much. I'll make it quick. I know you guys have a lot of things going on, and it's always a pleasure to come over here. And then hearing the great things that you have going on in the city is just kind of rewarding to hear those things. So, thanks for allowing me to come over here and spend just a few minutes to share a little bit about what we have going on on the county sheriff's office side of things. I always deliver our end-of-the-year report, and for those of you that do not have a copy or would like to see what those responsibilities entail, they're on our website, this report each of the last several years, there's a link. This report I gave out tonight is for 2019 that just contains the data, statistics, if you will, that we collect throughout the year on calls for service that we handle and the areas that those take place. It's always a pleasure to come over here and talk a little bit. I know that Chief Farrell lost or left already, but we have just an outstanding law enforcement relationship county wide, and it's a pleasure for me to just briefly mention that because we train with each other regularly. And it's because of Chief Farrell's theory, so I appreciate that, and the other chiefs, because there's no egos that get in the middle of the way of our progress. We plan together, we discuss things, and those serious things that we all know that could happen, I believe we're all pretty well-prepared to be able to handle those things and hope that they don't happen. The only things I will kind of hit as, I don't know if I call them highlights, but things that stand out more than others, and then I'll answer any questions. You mentioned that you have an upcoming awards banquet here in the near future, and we just had ours for our office this past Saturday. And we do, you know, those things, and it is just that, it's to recognize our men and women that do this tough job. I go around the community and get to stand here and talk and maybe bore some people for a few minutes, and I get a pat on the back. But we all know that the people that deserve the recognition of those people that you're seeing on a day-to-day basis doing those things and taking those real risks. And there were two situations that stood out last year above many of the good things. And in November 26th, we had a gentleman from out of state that ended up going on State Route 71 the wrong direction. And when he did this, he hit a semi truck head-on. It was he and his two boys, a five-year-old and a three-year-old, and two of our deputy sheriffs arrived at this scene first before EMS got there. And they immediately recognized that it was just a tragic, severe accident, that the man and one boy was obviously deceased, but they recognized some signs of life of this three-year-old. And customarily, we do try to maintain things till EMS gets there. And in this particular case, they just sprung into action and swooped the boy up in his arms. One deputy sheriff held him while they drove in a cruiser to the local hospital. And following that, all the medical staff, EMS, have clearly indicated that this young boy had severe enough injuries that he would have not survived that. And he spent several weeks in the hospital trying to recover, and ultimately did get to go home with his mother. And these two deputy sheriffs just are, they just did a phenomenal job, one of those things that our training just kicks in. You get there, and sometimes you really aren't positive what to do, but you just react. And they were recognized at our awards dinner this past Saturday. And then the other situation I'll mention that rarely happens in this county, and I hope that we continue that way in this county, is in December, we had a robbery, murder that took place just outside of the city of Lebanon on Oregonia Road in our county. It was quite a bizarre case involving the resident's daughter, 17-year-old girl, that orchestrated this whole robbery. She planned, along with five other male teenagers, all these teenagers were under 18 with the exception of one. And she and these five boys planned to lure this other male to her house, and it's a male that she had had a relationship with, and the plan was to rob him, tape him up, kidnapping, so on and so forth. And so, as he gets there and he's communicating with her, two of these would-be robbers approach him, one with a baseball bat, and would-be, it just so happened that this man was armed. He turns to defend himself, shoots and kills this 18-year-old boy, in my mind, I'm old enough to say he's still a young man, a boy. And then the other guy who was armed with the firearm, they get in a gunfire exchange with one another. So, the second would-be robber ends up shot a couple of times, ends up in the hospital for weeks at a time. All of us are paying for this young man to get healed, as we would do because we take care of people. But in the meantime, we are spending a lot of money carding him back and forth. He is now back in custody, juvenile detention, with some upcoming medical needs. But these six people orchestrate this robbery, and they're all in custody now. All of them are facing murder charges. All of them will be bound over as adults, looking at the next, who knows how many years, spending their life for just some bizarre attempt to maybe get, who knows, a couple hundred dollars or something. But it doesn't happen here, and thank God it doesn't happen here, and we hope it doesn't continue. But the work that the men and women, the whole point of this, other than how severe this was, the investigators, the deputy sheriffs, we have crime scene specialists, all of these individuals, these professionals sprung into action and had every one of them locked up within a few days, with the exception of one. And he was just arrested and in custody about a week ago. And the amount of work put into that, the amount of evidence collected is just outstanding. And so, just to recognize them and the work that they do, I'm just extremely proud. And again, I was getting the pat on the back, but these are the individuals that deserve all the credit. So, I just appreciate being part of all that. So, with that, I will just turn it over to all you, if you have any questions or comments, and then I'll let you get on to business.
Are there any comments or questions? Thank you so much, Sheriff Sims. We appreciate your visit. We have our report to go through, and as you said, it can be found on your website, correct?
Correct.
For the public to see. Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, we're ready for item number eight, which is a presentation by Warren County Drug Task Force Commander Aerosmith.
Sheriff's a tough act to follow, so bear with me. Thank you again for the opportunity to come back this year. I appreciate that. I'm here to present our 2019 annual report, very similar to the report in the last few years that I've been here to present. I'm also here to thank you, Mayor and council, for all the support that we've received from the city of Mason, from the Mason Police Department, from the residents of the city of Mason, for the information that they provide to us throughout the year. So, we just want to thank everyone. We cannot operate and do what we do, which I'll talk about here for a few minutes, without the support of everyone around Mason and around the county. So, the annual report, hopefully you'll have an opportunity to flip through it later. Too much to skim through here right now, a little shorter than last year. I'd like to hit on a few points, and then I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have here tonight. So, 2019, we remained a multi-jurisdictional drug task force. Nothing changed as far as our overall structure goes. We are responsible for conducting full-time drug trafficking investigations throughout Warren County and the city of Wilmington. The city of Wilmington has been a part of our drug task force since 2004. They came on board due to a pretty significant drug nexus across State Route 73 in the northern part of our county. So, if you're familiar with that at all, you would understand that connection there. We remain what's called a HIDA initiative. HIDA stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. The Warren County Drug Task Force was designated a HIDA initiative in 2004 as well. Basically, HIDA is a federal program that requires the collaboration of local, state, and federal law enforcement, pushes us together under one roof with the same mission to target drug trafficking offenses within a certain area. A fantastic program. The multi-jurisdictional drug task force concept is by far the most effective way to target drug trafficking offenses. You know, there's not a law enforcement agency in our county that can push as many resources together on a daily basis to target this problem that impacts all of us. So, I just can't say enough about that. The HIDA program also provides some funding which helps us operate. It's a true force multiplier for law enforcement across Warren County. As the drug task force commander, I report to what's called a policy board. I mentioned that in the annual report as well. The sheriff, one of my many bosses, Chief Carter, one of my many bosses. The city of Mason has been a part of our drug task force for many years. I became involved in task force operations in 1999, and Chief Farrell was one of our bosses at that time. So, the city of Mason was one of the founding fathers long before I became involved in the drug task force. But 16 agencies are represented on our policy board, to include Prosecutor Fornshell sits on that board as well. We have monthly meetings, first Tuesday of every month. I'm required to brief our policy board on everything that has happened over the last 30 days. They receive an investigative briefing. They provide oversight, input, and direction for the drug task force. So, it's an equal playing field for everybody. Our policy board gets along well, and it's just a great way to operate a unit such as ours. So, thank you to Chief Carter, I know he's not here tonight, but for his continued service on our policy board. Personnel in 2019, we had 23 personnel, full-time personnel, assigned to our drug task force from 12 different law enforcement agencies around the county. That team consists of an investigative staff, a uniform interdiction team, and some support staff, a very small element of support staff. So, our investigative staff comes from local detectives, local agencies within the county who can contribute a full-time officer to our task force. State BCI, Ohio BCI, I don't know if you're familiar with that, I think most of you are. The Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation provides a full-time special agent to our unit. The FBI provides one agent, and DEA provides one agent. So, those two agents are federal components of our drug task force. Our uniform interdiction team comes from the Ohio State Highway Patrol, very fortunate to have these folks assigned to us. They provide four uniform troopers with canines, so that's four additional dogs, along with a uniform sergeant and lieutenant. So, the roadways in Warren County receive quite a bit of extra attention because of this relationship, and that all this comes together because of that HIDA program. I'll touch on a couple of quick investigations, just some numbers throughout the year. Our detective staff handled 479 cases in 2019. The criminal patrol uniform interdiction team had 314 cases, and all of this and more are mentioned in your annual report. They had 2,008 traffic stops and deployed their canines 288 times, 308 felony arrests, and 149 misdemeanor arrests. So, you know, our investigations, it's rare for a case of ours to take one day. Typically, they are multi-months. Some can go over the one-year mark, and some can go beyond that, just depends on how those cases are progressing. Part of our investigative staff, and this is really important, and another reason I'm here to say thank you, is our drug diversion program. We have one detective that does nothing but prescription drug diversion investigations. We have one detective that does nothing but prescription drug diversion investigations. This is a program that started at the Drug Task Force in 2001. Prescription drug abuse remains a significant problem throughout Ohio and the U.S. It's not something that you hear a lot about anymore. There are very few task forces around the state that have the resources to commit one detective to do nothing but diversion investigations. Of those four hundred and seventy-nine cases I mentioned for 2019, our diversion detective handled ninety-one of those investigations. So this one detective handled about eighteen percent of our overall caseload for our detectives. Plenty of work to do. Warren County had the highest overall prescription opiate seizures in the state of Ohio in 2019. A lot of that goes to the credit of this detective and the fact that we focus on this, where many counties do not do that. That data comes from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Multi-jurisdictional drug task forces are required to report seizure data on a weekly basis. So we really are aggressive with our investigations. Seized over six thousand unit doses of prescription opiates in 2019. That detective also provides quite a bit of diversion education. She's focusing quite a bit on healthcare facilities around Warren County. She did multiple presentations and education presentations at Mason Christian Village, Mason Healthcare, Cedar Village, primarily focusing on management and nursing supervisors, just to provide some training on red flags to look for as far as healthcare diversion of prescription drugs within that healthcare environment. This detective also coordinated the DEA Drug Takeback. That's where you see that advertised twice a year, where we're asking the community to bring their prescription drugs, unwanted prescription drugs in, to turn in, just to get them out of your medicine cabinets, get them away from people who may be fighting an addiction and be looking for pills. So that program last year resulted in two thousand four hundred and seventy-five pounds of prescription drugs. The Mason Police Department is a partner with us in that every year. So they set up together with our diversion detective, and it's just an incredible program. That's a lot of prescription drugs. Since 2017, our drug diversion program continues to exist only because of the generosity of this city, the city of Mason, the partnership that we have. And I cannot thank you enough for that, because it impacts the drug problems that we deal with in this entire county, in this entire region, and I don't believe we would be able to sustain it without you. So thank you very much. Drug trends in 2019, methamphetamine, I talked to a couple of you before this started. Methamphetamine remains our most commonly seized and readily available drug right now on the streets of Warren County. Back to the data that we report to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Warren County was the eleventh highest in the state of Ohio with methamphetamine seizures in 2019. Heroin fentanyl absolutely remains a problem, primary cause of overdose deaths, as most people are aware nowadays. We were seventh highest in our seizure data statewide on that. 2019, we experienced a pretty significant spike in LSD. We were number one in the entire state of Ohio for LSD seizures. Now, a lot of these numbers, if you, you know, I don't have to tell everyone in this room where we're geographically located. We're an aggressive task force. We're out there doing our jobs. We are also sandwiched between Dayton and Cincinnati. So we have two major source cities that are just north and just south of us. And unfortunately, a lot of our day anymore deals with drug traffickers that are coming either south out of Dayton or north out of Cincinnati. Very fluid business now, where they're in a dozen jurisdictions before lunchtime some days, and it's made our jobs quite difficult. So our numbers, southwest Ohio typically generates some very high seizure numbers just because of those two source cities and our proximity to that. So as our population grows, this county grows, there's a certain percentage of our population that will fight addiction. Therefore, there are customers here, and if there's customers, there will be those that traffic drugs, because as long as you have greed and addiction, you will have drug trafficking. I think everyone is pretty aware of that now. Funding remains inconsistent and unpredictable. We are funded through various grants, the HIDA program that I mentioned, the grant program, most of you are aware, it's quite the roller coaster ride. We drop thirty thousand off this grant, and we might get ten thousand more on this grant. It's a terrible, a very frustrating way to be funded. We depend so much on the contributions of our county commissioners and our communities throughout Warren County, such as the city of Mason and others, who make a financial contribution to us to keep our task force operational and keep us here from year to year. So thank you again for that. That's about all I have. Special thank you to Mason PD. We deal with them quite a bit, the information we get from them, and I know a lot of that comes from the citizens here in the city of Mason. But we operate off of the information we receive from the public. We don't have a magic wand to fix every problem, but I promise you that we're out there doing what we can do. We don't take this partnership for granted, and that's how we look at this. This is a team sport, for sure, that we can't do this without each other. And I thank you for letting me come here every year, and I'll be back next year if you'll allow me a few minutes. Glad to take any questions.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have a statement and a question, I guess. First of all, thank you for your service. Your service is invaluable to our city. What you do is very important, and we recognize that. And I know Mason's a huge supporter of the Drug Task Force, and when Barbara Berry Spath was the chair of the Safety Committee, she definitely increased the funding to the Drug Task Force. So we're very happy to support that and be part of that. But I do have a question. I guess Mike DeWine, Governor DeWine, had recently awarded two million dollars to the Ohio Drug Task Force.
Yes.
But when I looked through the list, I didn't see Warren County.
Yes, we're in there.
You are in there?
We are.
Okay, the article then just didn't list you.
It cut us off at the, why? But we are in there. We did receive a Recovery Ohio grant, so that was a new grant this year. So that, you know, we're very thankful for that. The problem is, our drug law enforcement grant took about a thirty-eight thousand dollar cut, and then we got fifty thousand of it back through Recovery Ohio. So we took, it's another example of
Right.
Two steps forward and, you know, three steps back, and that's kind of the struggle that we have. We're very appreciative of Governor DeWine and what he's, he is truly trying to help drug task forces across the state. And, you know, many across the state are looking at how we're trying to just diversify our ability to fund ourselves and stay operational. Every community wants drug task forces around, but they're expensive to operate, and it's a lot of manpower under one roof, and there's, you know, there's just a lot to it, that frustration of funding is just never-ending for us.
And I can definitely see what you're saying, because I've reviewed what other areas in Warren County have given you, and it's somewhat deficient, I think, for the services that you guys provide. So hopefully, someone can go into those different communities and try to rally up some more funds for you guys.
We have, we've really pushed hard and had, you know, we have great partnerships all across this county, and there are communities in this county that just don't have the financial ability to
Right.
To provide much more than they're already doing. So there are very few that don't give us anything, but there are some that have doubled their contribution, and that adds up to fifteen hundred dollars. You know, it's tough as you look across this county. So we are, we're so appreciative of what this city does for us. And we do, as you see that list of, that's a public list, and I'm sorry, I did attach that to our documents this year, and we pushed that out there so everybody knows that just about every community is trying to help us, and they believe in what we do, and they appreciate it. But some don't have the means to do much more.
Sure. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. We really appreciate what you do.
Thank you, sir.
I can recall when I campaigned door-to-door even two years ago, there was an app that I used that asked a state question, and it said, "What's the biggest issue concerning the state?" And it listed at least eight different, really good things. And what everybody hit in Mason as the biggest issue with the state was the drug issue, heroin, and everything connected to meth. I mean, the drug overdose problem we've been having was what, I was amazed that that was overwhelming even here in Mason, everybody recognizing this severe issue here that we have across the state. Is there a hotline, if people, is there maybe an anonymous hotline where people can call if they think they suspect something? You know, don't they do something like that for, even if you can report a DUI driver? There's a one-eight-hundred DUI or something like that? Is there something like that for?
We take a lot, well, many of our tips come in as anonymous. Many people don't want to attach their name to that. Most of our
Call for that.
We just, we use our regular number. Years ago, we did have an eight-hundred number. We've changed that, and that's on our webpage as well. The new number, we finally, believe it or not, have county phones after twenty years, so now we have a county extension. But five-one-three-six-nine-five-zero-zero-seven-zero is our main number, and we, but a lot of people choose to email us. And, right, so you can, drogtips.org, and that comes right to us, and we get a lot of Gmail, email complaints, and then they change their email address, and we'll get a couple more. But that's the way the public really likes to communicate with us more and more.
And then the other thing I wanted to ask is, I know that there's an issue among our youth that are experimenting, I guess we maybe all kind of lived through our youth days of different things we tried and did, but even nowadays, different things that the youth, and you mentioned LSD.
Yes, sir.
Whether it's mushrooms, whether it's the Robitussin, or whatever, the kids are trying constantly stuff, you know what I mean, all the time.
Yes, sir.
And do we have something where we're trying to educate through them, maybe even through the schools? Do you go through the schools? Or what are we doing to help reach our youth, to help them? Because right now, they're on their phones, they're YouTube and things, and they know more than most of us parents from what they're doing, and a lot of that's wrong.
No doubt about it. They get a lot of bad information and some very blurry boundaries, as we were talking, I was talking with a few of you beforehand. But we, as the Drug Task Force, we do not go into the schools ourselves. We do collaborate with the Warren County Educational Services Center. We participate in their education presentations through school. We provide current drug trends and data like that. We provide a ten thousand dollar donation to their program every year out of asset forfeiture money to support education and prevention. You're exactly right. I mean, we can't say enough about education and prevention. I mean, treatment, absolutely part of the fix for this, but we just feel strongly about education, because, you know, we see so many examples of if you can, you can change the mind of that kid who's on the bubble of what to do and make a good decision. If you can stop an addiction before it starts, so to speak, that's a lot easier path to go down than it is to treat an addiction once you're moving down that road. So, you know, we try to, we communicate with DARE, the DARE officers and people that are officers, school resource officers that are in schools. But we do not provide detective staffs, detective personnel into school, if that makes sense. We just can't do that because of our mission, and it's hard to, you can't really work enforcement like we do and be in a school at the same time. So that's our, how we choose to help with education, but, so we're trying to do our part.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Chance?
I've done, I just, by default, but it's been somewhat of a passion in regards to working with recovery around heroin. And Judge Peeler, just to bring this to Mason, right, to understand Mason, but Judge Peeler told us a stat, and I know you guys have heard it several times, but I'd just like to say it as much as I possibly can, just to, not really edify, but just to prove that there is a problem here in Mason, that in 2018, there were more overdose deaths in the city of Mason than there were automobile deaths in the entire county. So that, to me, was, I sat there, and it kind of had to resonate for a second, and I sat there, and I almost didn't believe them. And so afterwards, I got to sit down with Judge Peeler, and sure enough, that was a fact. And so as much as, you know, we hate that we have to have this, but the need is certainly there. So again, you just, along with, you know, everyone else here on council, we just thank you for what you do, continue the great work, and, you know, it's a never-ending fight, that's for sure. So we appreciate you being in it.
Thank you, sir. Judge Peeler's done great things, and that's, you know, we feel strongly that it takes all three of these specialties, from enforcement to treatment to education, to make any headway with this. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Commander. Thank you. I wish we didn't have to talk about this stuff, but we do, and that's part of our job. We have to talk about and address the hard things. So we appreciate you very much. Thank you for engaging with us today and informing the public at large as well. Thank you. All right, we are ready for item number nine, which is recognition of visitors. Is there anyone from the audience today that would like to approach the podium and address council? I have some, I have some hands going up. Mr. Schwartz, would you like to go first, and then you can go next, sir? Okay, thank you. And when you arrive at the microphone, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Perry Schwartz. I'm a Mason resident. I have a home on the golf course at sixty-three oh nine Tartan Fields Lane. I want to read you a short email that I had sent to council and to Eric. Although the recent reduction in the number of committees of council may well result in somewhat lower annual operating costs from lower day-to-day administrative effort, I urge you to reconsider and reverse your recent decision of including the golf course committee into the new wellness committee. I'm offering this without the benefit of discussion with any council member or with staff. Substantial needed changes in high fixed capital costs, apparently planned for the golf course in the near term will surely benefit from a concentration of leadership, an effort that could not be, should not be diluted, as will surely be the case if buried within a wellness committee. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
I don't know if I'm supposed to be hearing this, but I want to just talk about the ordinance.
Yes, sir. So if you could approach the podium? Oh, is this about the public hearing, sir?
Yeah.
Oh, we're about to get to that, and then we'll invite you to speak as a part of the public hearing, if that's okay?
Sit close.
Thank you. Yes, sit up close. Anyone else for just regular run-of-the-mill recognition of visitors, not the public hearing? All right, seeing that there are none, let's move on to items ten and eleven, which are bundled together. We have ordinance twenty-twenty-five, which is a public hearing, and ordinance twenty-twenty-five, which is a second reading. I need a motion to read by title only.
Does that move? Sir?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Amending the zoning code and zoning map of the city of Mason, Ohio, to provide for the rezoning of approximately zero-point-nine-seven acres from R1, single-family residential to R6 condominium and land dominium residential located at forty-three-twenty Stitt Road. Stitt rezoning.
Okay. Kurt is going to give us a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The subject property is identified here in red. It's at the north end of Stitt Road, just past Branford Way, and here's Tyler'sville Road and Stitt Road, Arrow Drive. The subject property is currently zoned R1. It's just under an acre at point-nine-seven acres, and as you said, it's at forty-two-thirty Stitt Road. The applicant is requesting that this R1 be rezoned to R6, and as you can see, it's got R6 on three sides, and on the west side is a residential PUD, which has attached condominium housing as well. R6 does allow condominiums and land dominions, up to six units per acre. There is no plan for this property as of yet. There's no construction drawings, anything like that. This is just a rezoning that we're hearing tonight. Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning because it was consistent with the uses in the comp plan, and the surrounding zoning with R6 would be the same. If approved, they would need to go to ZBA if they wanted to develop it as R6, because it's just under an acre. Our code requires it to be a one-acre project area to develop as R6. With that, ordinance twenty-twenty-five is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Kurt? Okay, let's go ahead and open up the Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Thank you, Kurt. It's 8:14. Sir, would you like to address us?
Hi. My name's David Allen, and I'm the president of the Pine Run Condominium Board Association. Where you see the big R6 up there, that's, that's us. And I would respectfully like to request that any future mailings or information that goes out about this, that I be alerted as well, or the Pine Run Board. I know your rules say something about 300 feet of owners and whatever, but because it is an association, it would be nice if the board knew and was notified on what was going on. So if that's possible, I would certainly appreciate being notified for any additional meetings or any other conversation that's going on with us. So let me, let me start for just a minute. We've got maybe 12 people here. Pine Run is 20 years old. We've got 112 units. In the last six years, we've invested well over $500,000 in landscaping and asphalt and whatever to improve our community. I think that in the last two or three years, our rising, raising home values, houses or condos very rarely stay on the market for more than a week or two. And we want to make sure that whatever happens with this particular piece of property, that it does not affect our home values and the effort and the monies, you know, that we've put into it. So I was also very interested to see and hear about the golf course work that's going on, because that also affects us to a certain extent, because we line up with it. We have an ongoing flooding issue with the golf course and potentially the city of Mason, where along there, where it says rez, putt, or whatever, in this other building, there's drainage that comes down from a number of condo communities, and it ends up in a ditch that runs along the side of our property. And last June, we had a flood that came way up our road and was within 12 inches of entering some of our condos. Now, I know we've talked to some of the people, the engineers in the city of the Mason past. They said eight or nine years ago, they did a 100-year flood study, and they made some modifications and made some changes. Then last year, I know, on the other, the other end of the golf course, they made some changes with a bridge and more, more drainage and whatever. But we, but we have a problem there. And that was just one rain. It rained for three hours, hardly three hours, and we were flooded. Now, we don't know the drainage ditch that goes along the edge of our property, whether that's ours, or whether that's the city of Mason's, or who it is. So we're in the process of hiring an engineer to help us make a determination of what we need to do and who's really responsible for this water. So, you know, those boundaries are all old. There's old trees. There's really no markers anywhere that says specifically, you know, whose property is whose. So when we look at the area around that's looking to be rezoned, currently, there are trees, maybe six or eight trees, big trees. They're not good-shaped trees, and then a lot of trash trees. So whatever happens, you know, with this, we would want to make sure that a developer that came in didn't just bring a bulldozer in and knock down all those trees and all those shrubs that are, you know, well over 20 years old at this point. You can't plant trees that are going to give any kind of protection that's similar to what's there right now. So we're, we're concerned about that. We would prefer, obviously, that it remains as R1. I see it looks like maybe there's every rational reason to make it R6. I think that looking at putting six condominiums on that doesn't, to me and to our group, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Condominium that small is almost impossible to really run and finance and mortgage. I've been, been on the board of a place that only had 10 units or 12 units, and financially, it was very difficult to maintain that community and keep it going and do the kinds of things that you need to do. Whereas if that stays residential, split it in half and it's residential, then that does not really become an issue. So, you know, and if, I suppose, if the council would decide that it does need, it can be rezoned, you know, we would hope that they don't look at, you know, the developer doesn't look at building, you know, two and three-story condos like, or across the street, which would stand up like a sore thumb in our community. We're all, we're 112 units, all ranch. So that's our concern. We didn't really, I'm glad I had the opportunity to come and talk to you. So I don't know. Does anybody have any questions for me about anything?
Councilmember Chance?
With that, I understand with your HOA being obviously the surrounding R6, you're, I'm guessing when proposing this would not fall underneath that jurisdiction or that HOA? Is that right?
It would not.
It would not? Right.
And another concern we would have, and I don't know if this is legally possible, if they did that and put condos in there, we don't want anybody cutting a road through onto our property is another way to get in there. And also, as was mentioned earlier, usually you take at least an acre to have a spot. But if you put in six condos, then I don't know where there's room for retention pond with all the flooding that we have right now, or whether the city or anybody would say, "Well, we'll just use your retention pond." But our retention pond is already being flooded by the golf course and these, these other places. So I'm just not sure, you know, what we can do about the water situation coming down, you know, adjoining our condos. So they, our engineer that we did have out and been helping us would like to get a contract signed. One of the other issues that we have in that area is that I think the laws and rules and regulations were different back when that was built, and the storm sewers really aren't big enough anymore to handle the amount of water that we have coming. So in order to take all this additional water and even more, you know, because of these other buildings, where's it going to go? And how are those small sewers going to be able to handle it? That, that's what I have, so.
Okay. Those are all great questions.
I have a quick question, if I could.
Councilmember Nelson?
So this is more, I guess, for, for you in regards to, you sit on the planning commission as well when they have their meetings, correct?
I attend them. I'm not on the planning commission.
Okay. These are issues that are kind of vetted through the planning commission before they even come to council. Is that correct?
Right. If this rezoning was to be approved, the actual site plan for the condo or whatever development would go in here could go to planning commission.
Okay.
If it was just a single-family house, it's permitted in R6 as well, so it could be just redeveloped in a new house. That would be simply a building permit.
So he's talking about the retention ponds and the flooding issues. Was that vetted in planning commission before it comes to us?
No, this, they're just looking at the land use, so this is just rezoning. It's not, there's no site plan for this yet.
Okay. So I should, I should have said, but it will, like, if they come back to-
Right.
-planning commission. Those are issues and topics that you guys address, and, okay.
Right. And this property is not going to be able to fix the issues that they have. They have the building at the very northwest corner of their site. It's surrounded by 100-year floodplain. Anything that could possibly happen on this site could not fix that. So there's-
It can't get worse.
-floodplain back through them. Right. His concern is that it doesn't make it worse, correct? Right.
Thank you.
So if I can address that, Mayor, also, so yes, this, when it came before planning commission, I'm on the planning commission, it did come forth. This was strictly as the property owner, and I'm pretty sure that house has been there before all the other houses around there, right? So when you talk about, oh, you hope he doesn't take down trees and stuff, what he does on his property, I'm sure he was very concerned, what you guys all did, or that developer did, all around him too, right? So we all want to be good neighbors. But, I mean, I'm, that house is, I've lived here all my life, and that house has been there a very long time, and that family has, so. But basically, what came before planning commission was just to change the R1 to R6. Who knows what's going to happen? If he sells it, if he keeps it, or whatever. He may do nothing with it. He doesn't have to. So that's what we decide on, and we agreed to approve that or recommend the approval of it. And now it's before council to go to.
If it does get rezoned then to R6, and then there's a plan, some developer comes, do we still have opportunity at that point?
Before planning commission, and then it'll come again before council.
Okay.
That's a whole different step that'll take place.
So how do I assure myself that I get notified of these things?
It would just go to planning commission. It wouldn't need to come back to council, because they would be meeting the-
I understand that, but even if we were going to talk to the-
Yep. You can go on our website, at the very bottom of our website, you can click on subscribe or newsletter, what's the button? It's Agenda, E-A agenda. You can sign up for our E-A agenda. You can get the planning commission agenda every month and follow along with what goes on. Planning commission's always the first Tuesday of every month, so you can feel free to get on and see what's on the agenda as well on, on our calendar.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And if I can add to that, I think you can sign up to get notification for every committee meeting.
Yep. Councilmember.
Not sure what steps you have to take for that, but you could get every committee that you're going to hear committee reports on tonight, you would get a notification of when they're meeting. So that way you could come to all of them, and we welcome the public to come to this.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the podium to speak for or against? Come on up. State your name and address.
My name's Donald Legg, and I'm at 3965 Sandtrap. I heard a lot of discussion going on there, and I just wanted to make sure that if it is zoned as an R6, which could be a multi-homeownership condominium type of building that could go there in addition to a residential, is that correct? A single-family residential?
Yes. They could just choose-
Zone will do.
Right now, it's zone, single-family residential.
Potential multifamily use.
Up to a density of six units per that space.
And I, I think I heard, but I just wanted to clarify, that if it became, if it's zoned out of the R6 and there is a multifamily use anticipated in the future, any site plan, will that be shared with the residents of Pine Run? Or is that up to us to keep up with what you're doing?
Kurt?
You can, you can come request it from our office, but it's not something-
Will it be a public request?
There's not a, the rezoning is the public, where a public notice is sent out. If, if they do anything on the site that is R6 or less, that meets the requirements of R6, and that's permitted to go either to planning commission or a single-family house, they could just get a permit.
So what I heard you just say is that we wouldn't be notified again?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Now, can you go on your website? And did I hear you say to Mr. Allen that we can be put on the website as a request to be notified?
Yes. You can get our E-A agenda for every planning commission and council meeting and ZBA, I believe, gets sent out as well.
If you make an application for a notice, will they keep that in record and notify us if-
Yeah, so-
-if there's any site plans to be-
If you go on our website and you sign up for our E-newsletter, put your email in there, you'll get every newsletter. So you'll get every planning commission agenda, every ZBA agenda, every council meeting agenda.
That's the only way we're going to keep notified of what happens on any site plans.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And, and is that under the city of Mason?
ImagineMason.org.
What is it again?
ImagineMason.org.
All right. Thank you.
And you're always welcome to call the city during the week and ask for a reminder on how to go about that, and they'll be happy to help you. Okay? Thank you so much. Anyone else? Sir, could you, can you make it up to the podium? Or do we need to bring a microphone to you? We could do that. We have that technology. Sir, you can stay there, and we're going to come to you. Just state your name and address for us.
My name is George Mack McKean. I live at 3901 Sandtrap Circle. And I was just wondering why we have to go to you to get the information that is warranted? Is there no other way? Could you send a message to David?
Could we make a plan to send a message to David Allen?
Yeah, we can add you to our list if you want to write down. I can give you a piece of paper if you want to write down your email. We can add you to the list.
Thank you.
Yes, we'd be happy. And you can always call the city of Mason at any time, and they'd be happy to help you through anything, especially if getting online and signing up for something online is a little tricky for you. We're happy to help. Okay. Any, anyone else? Okay. Seeing that there are none, we need to close the public hearing. It's now 8:30. Did I get everybody? All right. Okay. Counsel, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? A motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
All right. Item number 12, ordinance 2020-25. This is just a first reading. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of a revised concept planned unit development plan for the Tower Park Development located at 710 Tylersville Road, Tower Park.
Eric?
We'd like to set a public hearing for March 9.
All right. Starting at our regularly scheduled time, well, the meeting starts at 7:00. Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else with that? I think we're done on that one. All right. So the meeting time is set. I have a favor to ask. Could we take five minutes before we jump into item 14 on the agenda? Would that be okay with council?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We don't need a motion, but I'm glad that you guys agree. Let's take five. We'll be right back. Oh, I got the thumbs up from Denny up there. Thank you. All right. Item number 14, ordinance 2020-27. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing a contribution of $100,000 to the Warren County Drug Task Force.
Uh-oh. We went a little too fast, didn't we?
I'm good.
Okay. You had a snap.
Not much to add on this from what Commander Aerosmith had to say. The city has a history of, since its inception, contributing to the Drug Task Force. In recent years, that contribution, after considerable discussion by the Safety Committee, was escalated to $100,000, and that was directed towards maintaining the drug diversion program that Commander Aerosmith discussed, which has continued to be successful. Also worth mentioning that the payment that the city makes, as well as other communities, is used by the Drug Task Force to then leverage additional state and federal dollars as those become available. The task force, again, as Commander Aerosmith related, does serve complaints originating from the city of Mason and does share equipment and investigative resources to expand our own Mason Police Department's abilities. They are asking for $100,000, again, to be contributing 2020 to continue funding the drug diversion program. The Safety Committee of Council did have an opportunity to review this request and[1728.57] The Safety Committee of Council did have an opportunity to review this request and recommended moving forward.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Item number 15, ordinance 2020-28. A motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rack &amp; Baller Excavating Company, Inc. for the Makino Park Asphalt Paving Project.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Prior to the grand opening that's coming up with the Common Ground Playground at Makino Park later this spring, we'd like to get the, a couple of things done. First, the surface course of the parking lot and striping of the parking lot, as well as the asphalt path that surrounds the park, the playground area, get that installed. We got quotes from four contractors, and we had estimated approximately $150,000 for this work. The low bidder came in with Rack &amp; Baller at $115,000, which was a very attractive price. The goal with this is to try to, as I said, get this work done prior to the grand opening. However, it is highly weather-sensitive, has a temperature, and a little bit of dry weather would be helpful prior to putting that, the surface course down, and especially the bike path. So what you're likely to see is the surface course first. The bike path may not be till later this summer when the conditions allow it for the soil. Budgeted, we did have $200,000 for some of the remaining items out at Makino Park in this year's budget, and so with that, ordinance 2020-28 is recommended for adoption for the contract with Rack &amp; Baller for this work.
Motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Item number 16, ordinance 2020-29. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
In ordinance, accepting the low and best bid for the State Route 741 and Parkside Drive Intersection Improvement Project from Rack &amp; Baller Excavating Company, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. The realignment of 741 at Kings Mills and Parkside Drive will be a tremendous improvement to that intersection. This project will add capacity to that intersection, as well as reducing the delay and the queuing that we could currently experience. We do have approximately $4 million in grant funds towards the project. Our bids for the project, we had four bidders with Rack &amp; Baller, who we just authorized the contract for the paving work out at Common Ground. That same contractor was a low bidder on this project at just over $4.2 million. And Joe reminded me, in the, in the write-up, it says the budget had $4.8 million for this project. He reminded me that we also, what I missed in the budget was we also had a little over $600,000 left in the JW Harris TIF that we were going to allocate towards this project because it benefits that TIF area, and it would close out that. So we actually had $5.5 million towards this project with a $4.2 million bid, which was, again, a very good bid. Rack &amp; Baller did some work on Bethany Road. We had a bridge that they replaced several years ago, and they also installed the bike path from Windermere Way over to the roundabout. And so they've done some work in the city and successfully did a good job. So with that, ordinance 2020-29 for Rack &amp; Baller to complete this project is recommended for adoption. We would expect construction to start within the next 30 to 60 days and take at least a year to get done. Some of that's going to be dependent on the utility companies getting some of their facilities out of the way, which they have yet to start on, but our goal would be to have the bulk of the work done by the end of this year, and then finish up work next year. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to adopt.
Seven.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, I may have a quick question.
Yes, council member.
Do we know the impact of the traffic flow for Parkside and Kings Mills while the construction is going on?
We're going to try to maintain traffic on 741, the duration of the project, so hopefully it would be fairly minor. I think naturally, drivers are going to try to avoid this area, so there could be some impact, but we're going to try to minimize that as much as possible.
Okay, and that's for Parkside and Kings Mills? Getting on to 741?
Right.
Can you mention 741, but?
Right. Yep.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes, basically, this is for the intersection, correct? I mean, how far up 741 does it go?
I didn't bring a layout of the project, but it essentially starts at what we call the Kroger signal there, and it wraps around up to the improvements at Cox Smith Road. So it's a Cox Smith to Kroger.
Okay, and Mr. Engineer, you want to wager a $5 bet that the utilities doesn't make it in time? I'm going to wager that it won't.
Yeah, but I think there's a considerable amount of work that we can do until they get out of the way, but there, we need, there's a few key poles that we need them to move. Some of the other issue that we're having, just to throw out there, is the signal poles themselves. Snyder Road is a good example where we're still, the contractor is still waiting on signal poles to finish up the Snyder Road project at Snyder and 42, and so that's a consideration for this project as well. We need to get those ordered as soon as possible. And for future 741 projects north of here, we've contemplated having a separate contract ahead of time just to get the poles on order. So, so that could be another delay to totally completing the project.
You don't want to bet?
I don't want to bet.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Item 17, ordinance 2020-30. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with CDWG for the purchase of hardware and licensing to replace and upgrade the existing citywide phone system in the amount not to exceed $150,000.
All right, Kurt?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is for the citywide phone system, which was replaced last in 2013. We expected to get about five years of life out of it, and we've gotten an additional two years. This, this second quarter of 2020 will mark the end of Cisco continuing to maintain our equipment because of the age of it. The current system handles over 200 phones. We use voice-over IP technology for our phone system, which is pretty common today. It is for the municipal center, community center, the Reclamation Plant Service Center, as well as the fire stations, and this is really a critical piece for us to communicate with residents. So obviously, we need to keep it intact. One upgrade to the system will be with the SAN, the storage system that was approved late last year. It's being installed kind of cooperatively with this project. Along with the fiber ring that we now have in the city, we'll be able to have a backup recovery system. So if the system, if there was something to happen to this building, our backup EOC will be Fire Station 51. We could easily get the phone system back up and running from that facility due to our fiber system as well. So this is a replacement as well as an upgrade to our system reliability, and we expect this to last another five to seven years, consistent with our schedule for replacement. The CDWG is a state bid contractor, so this is a state bid purchasing program, and the contract, the ordinance is for not to exceed $150,000, which was the amount budgeted. Ordinance 2020-30 is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions you may have.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gil?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item 18, which is committee reports. We are going to just try to fire off in order, in alphabetical order, well, item order, as you can see from the agenda. So downtown committee is represented by Councilmember Hunterlaw, if you'd like to start us off tonight.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we had a great first downtown committee meeting on January 23, and we were doing our gap analysis, and we had the city provide for us a time review of what has happened in downtown in the past and what's been going on recently to help catch us up. We were also lucky to have Kathy Harbison there from Base Ohr Flowers, representing the Mason Deerfield Chamber of Commerce, and she was able to give a review of what the chamber has been doing there, with a flow chart, and it was very helpful for her to be able to explain what's been going on and catch us all up on council. So our next meeting is this Thursday, the 20, hold on, I got it written down here, let's see. Thank you. It is the 27th at 8:00 a.m., so if anybody else would like to come, thank you.
Great. Economic Development. Did we meet? Did we report last month? Oh, I'm the chair, am I the chair of economic, I think I'm getting sleepy. Okay, all right, we did meet as an Economic Development Committee, but I reported on it last, last month, and we've had no action since then. Okay, moving right along, and not embarrassed at all, is item C. That's educational initiatives, and that's also me. We met a few weeks ago and discussed with members of the May Chamber some ideas about events that we can foster to create greater engagement with council and staff and local business leaders, education leaders, to tackle the topic of workforce development and future needs of the City of Mason. Okay, we are ready for employee relations.
Employee relations, we meet once a year, so we'll meet in November.
November, thank you very much. Okay. Events, we had no action. Finance Committee?
Yes, mayor, the Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 13, and I have some exciting news, actually, to present, in that the city staff, particularly the Finance Department and city, has done a great job of preparing a report. Moody's had requested a report regarding our bond rating, which has been at AAA status, and they were in to review our status and determine whether we should maintain AAA rating, and they, the staff, staff put together a great report that requested the affirmation of our AAA bond rating, pointing out that Mason continues to be a great, high-growth epicenter for Southwest Ohio, that we're continually recognized throughout Southwest Ohio, is having a strong economy and tax base, and continue to grow and attract talent and world-class investments, that we have a very strong financial profile with strong budgetary performance, budget flexibility, and liquidity, and that we certainly manage our debt burden with planned payoffs of portions of the city's outstanding debt in 2020. And I'd like to actually turn this over to Eric to comment a little bit further on this. This Moody's report that was given to Moody's is available, I believe, and certainly an excellent presentation of the city's position financially, and if you could just comment in regard to the same, I think it's appropriate to highlight some of these things.
I think Councilmember Gilb undersold it a little bit. Moody's call is scary and stressful, and staff did an excellent job, both Joe Regelsberger, who leads up this effort, but together with Jennifer Heft and Economic Development staff, went through a discussion, as well as myself, and bond counsel, and there's a crowd of folks in the room with a pretty extensive presentation. We were able to provide a copy of that to the Finance Committee, and I'll maybe apologize. We, I have, I think in your next packet, we'll be able to provide a copy of the full report, together with the subsequent material. When we met with the Finance Committee, we had just given the presentation. There was then a follow-up call with Moody's where they asked some other questions, and we got a little bit of an indication of where they were headed. And then, just late last week, received confirmation, so I'll have some press release, some other items specific to council's attention to move forward on the credit rating. But we kept the AAA rating, and it was, it was a stressful situation, but it was, at the end of the day, relatively easy because Mason is very blessed in financial position. One thing that I was going to say for the next meeting, but since we're all friends here, and it's, you know, getting a little bit later, I knew we were, where we were going to be at the credit rating when the analysts were, you know, kind of debriefing with us, and the chief analyst said, well, and AAA is the highest that they offer. You can't, there is not, you know, anything, and we're listening to what he's saying. He goes, well, you know, we don't offer quadruple A. He didn't confirm what we were getting, but I knew at that point that it was pretty safe. We didn't get a quadruple A, but we did get a AAA with no negative outlooks. Moody's is doing the press on that, and I should be able to email out later this week some of that, and then you'll have full copies in your packet, and maybe the next council meeting, we can give a little credit for the work that goes into it, even though it may sound a little, we've maintained that AAA rating for, I think, maybe 10 or 11 years now. There's a ton of work that goes into it, and I think council would be very proud if they could have been in that room to see staff, both how they present it, but also how staff interacted with each other, not only speaking of, you know, the straight finances, but also our economic development success and our partnerships and the quality of life. It was just, it was a very gratifying presentation for me to just watch how staff handled that call. So I hope to have more of those materials out to all of council, and maybe the next meeting will draw a little bit more attention to keeping the AAA rating.
If I can just add to that real quick, I mean, I've worked with Joe now for the last four years. He's our finance director, and he does an amazing job. He's extremely intelligent, he knows what he's doing, and he is quite an asset to our city, so we're very, very fortunate to have him.
No doubt. Mayor, and I would, I would want to add that the Finance Committee considered bringing a recommendation that Moody's consider a quadruple A rating as part of their criteria, but we'll, we'll pick that up another time. I do want to also point out, in your materials that were passed out for the council tonight, there was a 2019 year-end financial overview, and it reflects that budgeted revenues in 2019 were $37.2 million, but actual revenues were $43.5 million, so 117% over budget, and expenditures were budgeted at $31.7 million, and actual expenditures were $27.1 million. So we certainly did a good job of collecting revenue and controlling expenses, as the city always does. So net activity for 2019 allowed for $12 million to be transferred to the General Capital Fund, and a million dollars to be transferred to our Economic Sustainability Fund. And after these transfers, the unencumbered fund balance for the general fund is $11 million. The current balance is 25% of 2019 revenues and 37% of 2019 expenditures, and we have a targeted fund balance, as a matter of policy, at 25% of expenditures. So, and so being, being at 37% of expenditures, certainly, we've done a good job. So there's detailed analysis of all the financial picture in your materials, and I certainly would encourage members of council and the general public to take a look at the general financial picture for the City of Mason, and it's very good. Thanks for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, the Policy and Legislation Committee had no action last month, which leads us now to Public Services.
The stars aligned, and Tony and I, there's been a glaring situation that we see in the City of Mason. Whoops, sorry.
So glaring, you can't see it?
So glaring, you can't see it, yeah, no pun intended, I guess. We, so we had a meeting, and we discussed the overpass on Kings 741, right? So we've looked at that, you know, as I mentioned every time, my wife is extremely happy because we always go to our friend's house, come home, and get off. We go to 123 up in Lebanon, and we come home, and you can't see that sign. Well, we're going to do something about it. So we have, we worked with Kurt, he's, he's talked to ODOT, we're looking at what that is. I'm hoping they can do a rendering for us, a traffic flow study and all that good stuff. So that's, that's marching down the path, which is extremely exciting. We also discussed just three different signs, putting up a sign that mentions that the next three exits are Mason, and that was two exits, two, not three.
Two.
Two.
Two. Two exits. So, that was the excitement around public services. And that was, I think they met one time in the last two years, so we've trumped that. So, we are ready to meet again, hopefully, to discuss the overpass.
Thank you for that wonderful update. That's great. All right, Public Services. Oh, no, Safety, excuse me.
Safety Committee met January 28th at 4:00 p.m. All members present. Chief Carter, Assistant Chief Dieter Schaimer, if I pronounced that correctly. Thank you, Eric, for nodding your head. Okay. Lieutenant Hayes provided an overview of the campus safety program. The campus safety team has been instrumental in being part of the process in resolving law enforcement matters, and not only at the school, but with the general public, and stopping them before they could possibly become a major issue. And that was a nice overview. We had a fire chief there, Chief Brummingen. He indicated a desire slash need for a third medic transport unit. Safety Committee will be reviewing that at a later date as we get more information. And he provided an overview of his department, basically how many men and how many, where they were. Chief Brummingen was tasked with the analysis of what would be required for the Mason Fire Department to obtain a Class 1 rating. We are currently a Class 3 rating. The lower the rating or the number, the better usually property owners' insurance premiums. He's going to give us an analysis on that, and we'll get back with council when we have the information.
Thank you. Wellness?
Yes, the Wellness Committee has not met since the last time I gave the report, and of course, the Wellness Committee is the Golf Committee and the Community Center and the Aquatic Center. So, we have not met in the last two weeks, so...
Okay, thank you very much. All right, other assignments, item 19 on the agenda.
I was going to talk about the Veterans Committee. We've met. Did you guys talk about that last time at our last meeting? No? Okay. We met, and we kind of left, started where we left off last time, and Ashley was on the Veterans Committee, so he might be able to add a little input to this from before. But, so we have an idea of putting some veteran flags around downtown.
That was my idea.
Was it your idea to begin? Okay, there you go. Why don't you talk about it then? Because we talked, we did...
No, I don't know.
Okay, so we discussed it in this last Veterans Meeting. We're picking up on it. It kind of, we didn't go anywhere with it for a little while last year, but we've picked back up, and we're moving forward. I think we're going to start with the flags in the downtown, what is that called in the middle there? Pavilion?
Plaza.
Plaza, thank you. In the plaza, and then kind of move from there. So, we're working out all the details right now, but it's a really good, it's a really good program that we're putting into place, and you're going to be able to see different veterans' flags throughout the city with their pictures on it, and it's just really great to be able to honor them and for us to be part of that. There's some other cities that actually do this right now, and it's just fabulous. So, stay tuned for more details on it.
Yeah, I'll add to that real quick, though, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I got the idea of driving through Blanchester, and on some of their poles, like you would see kind of in our boulevards, there were, I don't know, four by two, and it was pictures of veterans. And to me, it was, you know, it kind of gave you that hometown feel again, right? It kind of, the Americana side. So, we talked about it, and I know we talked about what that looked like rolling it out, but I'm so happy to hear you guys are picking that ball up and running with it, because I think that will add an element to Mason that, very similar to our bricks out there to where we could sell spots, so good job. Thank you guys for doing that.
Councilmember Bradburn, did you have a report?
Yeah, Warren County Municipal League met February 24th. Mason was well represented with Councilmember Nelson there, Assistant City Manager Heft. And I have to admit, as I've sat here this whole time, I didn't realize she was missing until now, okay? So, that, you can, you know, just boom. Yeah, I see it. It's like, okay. And as well as our Finance Director, Joel Regelsberger, was also in attendance. List of items being considered at the state level has been included in your council packet. My biggest takeaway from the presentation from Ken Skarrett, Executive Director of the Ohio Municipal League presentation, was that Governor Dewine has indicated to the legislature that they should not be anxious to pass legislation that affects the current operations of local government. Diana, do you remember that comment?
I do.
Did you almost fall out of your chair?
Well, no, because he has actually been saying that since he has been governor. He is a huge supporter of the municipalities, and he's not for preemption. And so, he, I am a huge supporter of his as well. So, he likes to leave, leave it in municipality's hands versus the state dominating, so he's...
Compared to the previous regime.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
I have nothing else to add.
Okay, I would like to add a little bit. So, I also wanted to talk a little bit about opioid, excuse me, and drug addiction. So, the Ohio Department of Health has actually launched a new online initiative dashboard that tracks data from hospital emergency rooms across Ohio, and the main intent of the dashboard is to track the number of suspected overdoses per county each quarter. And you can actually go in and view that if you go to the Ohio Department of Health's website. It's pretty interesting to see and sad at the same time. The governor has also been holding a number of meetings this last month with government officials and attorneys to discuss the allocation of funds for the opioid settlement. The current proposal would allocate 30% of the money directly to local governments for anything related to addressing the opioid epidemic. 55% of the money would be allocated to a foundation managed by a board made up of members from local governments. Those members would include appointments from the governor, the attorney general, and the legislator, legislation. The foundation would allocate the funds to regions in Ohio that were drawn up based on factors, including population and number of drugs distributed. The funds would be allocated to these regions for the purpose of addressing efforts regarding abating the opioid epidemic. I don't know why I can't say that today. So, since the foundation is controlled by local governments, which is great, 85% of the settlement money would be distributed to the local governments. The remaining 15% would be allocated to Ohio to combat the epidemic, which would be 100% of the funds earmarked for the opioid addiction. And if Ohio, if it's, the proposal is agreed upon, Ohio will be the first state to come forward with an agreement, which is really important because that might mean that we get the money first. And numbers are just kind of being thrown around right now. It's not, it's not a definite number, but what I have heard is $18 billion to Ohio over the next 18 years. So, this is a really big deal, and I've been following it, and I will keep you posted on what happens with it.
I had the pleasure to talk about One City for Recovery's Gala last week, or last meeting, and I told everyone that I was going to reach out to the governor's office, and I'm going up in the middle of March, and you're more than welcome to go if you're available. I'll get you the exact dates. I forget when. But I'm going to go meet with Governor Dewine and talk about this. So, this is absolutely perfect that he brought it up. And again, to plug, One City for Recovery is having their annual gala. My company bought a table. I'm not able to attend first time yet, but it's my six-year-old's birthday, and if I missed her birthday, I would be not, I'd be in trouble, so... But if anyone has the opportunity, again, I just want to commend the city here for participating again, because I think we can all tell that there's definitely a need there, so... And thank you for bringing that back up.
Planning Commission met, and we covered just one topic, which was the Tower Park PUD, for which we have a public hearing set for March 9th, which we've covered tonight, and it was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission, six to zero. We worked through some conditions. We had a little hiccup with one of the conditions, which had to do with the drive-through, and we ended up striking that, and we're going to work through details with Planning Commission again, but this will come before council, and again, public hearing March 9th. Anything else? Did I miss anything? All right, we have old and new business. Item 20, old and new business.
Mayor?
Yes, council member.
It is election season, and I just want to bring attention to one particular issue, and that's the school levy. I think it's worth noting, because I think the city and the school are very much intertwined. As Councilmember Bradburn mentioned, you know, we have great partnerships when it comes to campus safety, but I think it goes even beyond that. When we think about economic development, we think about attracting companies, businesses to the area. You know, these companies, it's not in a vacuum. We're competing against other cities. You know, and they want, these companies, they want a strong and vibrant school system, not just to retain the talent that they have, but also to attract new talent. And, you know, unfortunately, I think it appears that there's some misinformation that's out there, so I encourage... Excuse me?
I'm just questioning if you endorse or disapprove of either side?
I'm absolutely not. I'm absolutely not. Thank you, yeah. So, it does appear that there's some misinformation out there. So, what I'm encouraging is all my colleagues and everybody, the community, to do their own research, find out what that impact could have on their particular household. There's a lot of different places that they can go. I went directly to the Warren County Otter's website. You can also go to the schools' website and see a calculator, actually calculate what your taxes would be with this levy in place. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, council member. Anything else in old and new business? Okay, item 21, recognition of visitors. Okay, seeing that there are none, item 22 on the agenda, we have executive session for the acquisition or disposition of property. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase and sale of real property. Do I need to say disposition as well?
I think the point is that it is potentially for both the purchase and sale, both acquisition and disposition of properties.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there a motion?
Are we going in for employment compensation also?
We are not tonight. That was taken off. So, let me read that motion again. A motion to adjourn into executive session for the purchase of discussing the purchase or sale of real property. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second, please.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Mayor, once again, I'm struck with the fact that we've had a birthday in between our last meeting and this meeting, and before we adjourn, I believe we should recognize that birthday appropriately. Other than that, I'm in favor of the...
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Hunterlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes. All right, I have, I have been told that we have a very special birthday. Councilmember Bradburn is getting younger every year, and we are going to have a super, super great birthday song, and we will go on back to executive session. Who wants to kick us off? Oh, Member Hunterlaw, it's a beauty to volunteer. All right.
Happy birthday to you.
I will pay you back.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, gears don't winder. Happy birthday to you.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Good night.